Hello and welcome to the Gettysburg Update. In this episode, I will be interviewing Jeff Rio. Jeff Rio is the Director of the Center for Public Service at Gettysburg College, and has worked there for the past fifteen years, inviting students and faculty to connect with the Gettysburg community through public service. He has been the principal organizer of Project Gettysburg Leon's Annual Salsa on the Square Event for the past twelve years, celebrating the Latino community in Adams County. Rio is running to represent the First Ward of Gettysburg, which consists of addresses in the borough east of Baltimore and Carlaw Street in the Gettysburg Borough Council to fill Patricia Lawson's seat as she finishes out her second term expiring in December. She has expressed support for his candidacy. Rio is running as a Democrat in Ward One against Republican David Peters, co-owner of the Blue and Gray Bar and Grill. So without further ado, let's get into my interview with Jeff Rio. My first question is a general one. Why are you running for Borough Council?
So I work at Gettysburg College and I care a lot about its success. I want to see this place thrive. I also am a Gettysburg resident, an Adams County resident. I care much about my community as well. And I want to see Gettysburg Borough thrives. And both the Gettysburg Borough has a lot of assets. The college is one of them. But I see my work at the Center for Public Service as being a way to try to work cooperatively, the college and the borough together, nonprofits and such, to ensure that we are enhancing the quality of life for college students in terms of their learning and also in terms of housing issues, food security issues, immigration rights in our community. So I already have that experience working cooperatively between the college and the town. And I thought that this was another way to do that, that if I could be a part of conversations that are happening at the borough level about policies, zoning, and goals for the future, whether that be about zoning or about what the square looks like in ten years, that those have impacts on the college and the college can have, hopefully, some positive influence on those things. So again, it's this cooperative relationship that I think being a Borough Council member can help my work at the Center for Public Service, just as the Center for Public Service and my knowledge there can hopefully help my role as Borough Council. They were complementary roles is another way to say it.
I understand, absolutely. So the first topic I wanted to discuss specifically is policing, which has been a very hot topic in the borough with the mayoral election. Chad Allen Carr has one way of thinking about it. He wants the Borough Council of Seven to oversee the police department. He is the Democratic nominee for Gettysburg Mayor. And Rita Friedling, the Republican, sees it differently, wants it to oversight to remain under mayoral control. So I just wanted to ask you, firstly, would you support the transfer of police oversight from the mayor to the Borough Council?
It is certainly an issue that deserves a lot of investigation. I have listened to Matt Moon, current Council Chairperson, and he is persuasive in his making the case that Chad Allen's position, Chad Allen Carr's position makes sense, that while responsibilities to hire and fire and many other responsibilities of oversight of the police department are with the Borough Council, the day-to-day operations is not, and that seems a little inconsistent. However, I have to say that I have not made up my mind on this issue. It seems that if Chad were to be elected, it seems like it would be his decision and not a Borough conversation. So it may not be the Borough Council's debate that leads to the whatever goes forward there. So the only say I'll have is whether I vote for Rita or Chad.
Yeah.
But I will say, you know, on a personal level, I like them both so much. It's really hard. This is actually one of the hardest decisions I've ever made in terms of elections, where it's just been, you know, I have such fondness for Mayor Friedling, and she's been so supportive of PGL and Salsa on the Square and other things. I really hold her in high esteem. And Chad is such a great contributor to our community with the community theater. So I'm gonna, if this sounds like I'm ducking a question, it's probably what's happening. And but I do think it's an important question. I think that it's important that Chad says, hey, this isn't forever. We've experienced some challenges in the past with the model we have, not under Mayor Friedling, but in the past further than that. And perhaps we'll try it this way. If it doesn't work, the next mayor can change it back. So that feels a little less like, you know, risky, like we're making a change forever, so.
Yeah, fair enough. But if Chad's plans go through, you will have a strong role in oversight of the police department. So just hypothetically, if oversight of the police department is transferred to the Borough Council or the Borough Manager, whether that may be they report to the council, so what would your general approach to police oversight be?
I've been to a lot of Borough Council meetings. And as about, as one of seven Borough Council members and being present with all of the full-time staff, like the Borough Manager and Planner and others, it's comforting to know that no one's in it alone. No one is going to say, it is my decision to decide what we're going to do about this, you know, incident that happened with the police department. I certainly take deliberation and discussion seriously. That said, if there is a concern about policing that I have and that I would pay attention to, it's how we are treating our immigrant community and our undocumented community. We know that they are here. They are many, I have friends who are undocumented, and they are longstanding members of our community. They hold important jobs. They attend our churches. They work alongside of us. And I don't want to see fear that they might have because of police activity or police cooperation with ICE to be a reason that they live a quality of life that is less, that is fearful. So that is an issue that if I had a chance to voice that and have an influence on that in police oversight, I would probably use.
Absolutely. And a further question, would you support a civilian review board of the police department? And can you give sort of your general approach to complaints about police conduct and investigations by the council that may happen?
Yeah, I referenced this just a bit earlier, that there have not been any major challenges that I know under Mayor Friedling's time as mayor, that there were several lawsuits that caused the borough to have to pay out prior to that. So in terms of conduct, I take it seriously and I want to see people acting with kindness, acting in a way that makes our community safer. If community members are afraid of our police, then that's not making us safer. We want them to see them as protectors, not as mean people who enforce rules in a overly strict way. So your question was?
A civilian review board.
Yeah, I've not had the experience with anything like that. I've not read a lot about it. But I certainly like transparency and I want community input. So it doesn't sound like something that would cause problems. If we heard more from the community, then that would help us to be more effective.
And I still have a couple more, like shorter questions. So I think there's been a little bit of discussion in the community. Would you make a bachelor's degree required for police officers? Do you see that as something that's necessary?
I tend not to focus too much on credentialing only, meaning that experience can count. Certain experiences can, would, for me, mean as much as a degree. Of course, that's case by case, but I don't, I don't think that that would be a requirement from my perspective.
Gotcha. So you do like a more holistic view?
Yeah.
Yeah. Also, one more about the police department. Would you support mandating body cameras and de-escalation training for police officers?
I think that that is an area, like policy-wise, that I wouldn't shy away from as if the oversight was with the council, you know? Taking seriously, should we have body cameras? And who has control over where that video is held, stored, when it's deleted? Because it's accountability. And I think, I'm not saying that our police department is corrupt. I'm saying that I believe power corrupts. I think, and so we want to, as much as we can, not place too much power with anyone. And if someone has the ability to say, we're gonna delete that file, that's too much power, you know? So I would be an advocate for body cams. I would be an advocate for transparency. And the second, besides body cams, you said?
Body cameras and de-escalation training.
Oh yeah, all kinds of training. If anything that is, anything that would be enhancing public safety and enhancing the residents' experience of living in Gettysburg. So whether that is, I don't know that our police force needs this because I don't have evidence that they're failing in this way. But if it were to be true that our immigrant community felt like they weren't supported, okay, maybe they need training in that area to help that community feel like they are not against them, but they're on their side, yeah.
Yep. So next, I want to move on to home rule. So home rule transfers the basic authority to act in municipal affairs from state law to local charter, drafted, adopted, and amended by municipal voters. Municipalities with home rule may exercise powers and functions not denied by the US Constitution, PA Constitution, and state laws. So my first question, would you support a home rule referendum? What do you see as the potential benefits and drawbacks of home rule for Gettysburg?
If we have this conversation at the Borough Council level, I'm sure it will be a long and thorough one, one which will bring me much deeper into my knowledge of home rule and its benefits than I currently have. That said, the reading that I've done suggests that the places that have adopted that have done so because they are a unique place, that they're a huge city like Philadelphia, or that they have some other unique feature that makes the structure, that the standard structure, a little less effective for them. I feel like I could be convinced that Gettysburg is unique enough in its burdens, in the ways we have to keep up so much infrastructure because of our tourists, not because of our residents, that I believe we should be open to home rule. We should have that conversation. We're very limited in how much we can raise tax revenue under this structure. Home rule would give us the opportunity to be creative in that realm. That said, I'm not saying, I'm running on, we're gonna get home rule and we're gonna raise tax. That's not what I'm saying. I'm just saying, we have, we've seen the budget proposal. It's got a big deficit. That's not gonna fly. We either need to cut a lot of things, raise taxes, or do some combination of both. Again, all that will happen before I were to take office. But the challenges are year after year. And certainly additional revenues that may not be coming from borough residents solely is an attractive option. And so I certainly think we need to look at that. We need to look at pillow taxes, all those kinds of things that might relieve the taxes, the tax burden that we place on our residents.
My next question is a little bit similar on the topic of home rule. So if a home rule referendum were to pass, what areas of borough governance would you most want to see changed or strengthened under the charter?
Yeah, that's an area that I'll, I don't have strong opinions that there are weak areas of our governance. Again, I've seen the challenge in our tax revenues and our budgeting. That is something that I feel like home rule provides an opportunity for. If in the conversation about home rule, I also say, hey, this, we can do this and this and this, those are changes that I have not, at this moment, considered or heard arguments for, so.
Absolutely. So next, I want to move on to affordable housing. So in the Gettysburgen, in an article with Brandon Fay, a very great article, you cited affordable housing in the borough as one of Gettysburg's most pressing issues with people working in tourism having to live in neighboring towns due to rent. You discussed repurposing historic buildings along the railroad tracks to expand housing options. Which historic buildings are you talking about? And can you expand on your idea of repurposing them?
Well, my ideas are dangerous. I have all kinds of ideas for things that we have certainly no control over. So it's dangerous to even name a building because somebody owns it and they're probably not selling it. So that's not quite fair. There's quite, if you walk down the tracks east, you will find, you know, you can think of the building where the distillery is. There's lots of buildings all around that. And, you know, certainly a future fifteen years from now where those might not be filled with, I don't even know if all of them are filled. I think some of them are empty. I think some of them have lots of, eh, I don't want to name them because I don't want to anger anybody who does own those things or suggest that they shouldn't be here. But I do think the value of property in the town is so high that it seems like there could be some things that are housed outside of the borough to create housing inside of the borough. I would love to see that happen. That's not the Borough Council's role. I mean, we can influence it through zoning and those kind of discussions, but it's not like we're gonna buy a building and turn it into affordable housing. So my work on affordable housing is certainly not limited to a potential role with Borough Council, but because I'm involved in the At Home in Adams County Steering Committee and Housing Work Group, you know, we work to try to influence people throughout the whole county in terms of being open to changes, to ordinances, incentivizing the building of affordable housing and all of those kinds of things. But I would certainly look at possibilities. How can Borough Council incentivize affordable housing? But in terms of specific properties, I sure was, it's not appropriate for me to be naming things and saying, oh, I wish that that one would be bought because I don't have the money to buy it.
I understand, yeah. Yeah, on that track, so the Gettysburg Station project, very controversial in the borough for many reasons. Obviously, the big one is the, you know, how it will, the size of it and how it will like interact with like the historic style of architecture in Gettysburg. But another aspect of it that has drawn criticism is that it will have all one hundred and eighty-five planned apartments at market rate, and there will not be affordable housing in there. How will you, and you discussed this a little bit in the end of your previous question. So how will you incentivize developers to include affordable housing?
Thank you. So the new zoning plan that's being discussed is allowing for taller structures, assuming that the developer meets incentives or special items that the borough has on their wish list. So for example, there are sections of the Tiber that are walled and the walls are coming down. And, you know, it's a complicated thing, just like sidewalks, where the homeowner is actually the one who's supposed to repair those walls, but it's so expensive, they can't. And so the borough is wanting to have them fixed, but the borough doesn't have the money either. So if a person said, yes, I'm gonna build a three-story building here. No, I'm gonna build a four-story, but I'll take care of that wall for you. Those are the kind of incentives the borough is trying to use. Like, we're not gonna give you more levels on your house, on your housing unit unless you meet some of our needs. I would like to propose, how about the first thing that they have to do is affordable housing? Not one of the many options they could incentive, they could choose as incentives, but once you do this affordable housing one first, then you can fix the walls on the Tiber or these other things, green spaces, parking, no parking, all those kinds of incentives that they also have. That would be a way to raise that one above the others and say, you know, you're not getting a six-story building unless affordable housing is part of it. So that would be one way.
Absolutely. Another question, maybe some critics would say, you know, there might be troubles with parking or traffic or density when affordable housing projects are proposed. How would you respond to residents who are wary of that?
Affordable housing in particular or just housing?
I'll just say housing in general.
Yeah. I mean, certainly, we've heard with the Gettysburg Station project, some concerns about traffic. And we're, I don't know what's taking so long, but we're still waiting for the traffic study. But the person who has reported on that at Borough Council meetings, and I have no reason to doubt him, says, you know, I've done this a lot. There's really not gonna be like a, anything that flags on this traffic study. This is really small potatoes compared to other things. So of course, there will be an official study and we will get there. But that's kind of my impression too. Like, I'm no expert, but I kind of think about how many times I get in my car and drive. And even imagining a hundred and eighty new cars right there, it just doesn't seem like that's gonna be that big. But of course, that's one project. And they were talking about, well, what if we keep coming? You know, and it's kind of towards the college in this redevelopment zone. What I would say about that is there are opportunities and challenges with every project. When I think about more housing in Gettysburg, I do focus on the opportunities. The number of new taxpaying residents who will also be people who frequent businesses in our town, eat at our restaurants, attend concerts and movies at the Majestic Theater, all the things that will help make our town run better and improve the quality of life. Fifteen years ago, you know Kitchen 101 or Food 101 on the corner restaurant up here? It was a restaurant that turned over, like every year. People would like have it open in the summer. They would try to go to lesser hours in the winter when the tourist season was ending. And then they would just fail and close their doors. So this is, it's not too far long ago when businesses struggled to be here when they weren't able to rely on tourists. That's a tough place to be. We want to be able to get through the winter season without restaurants closing. More residents in town are certainly gonna help that to happen, make our town a more thriving place. So I see the opportunities in tax revenue and people frequently, frequenting businesses, housing for faculty and staff at the college to live at so they don't have to live in Frederick or other places. I see all those as benefits. And certainly, we'll have to deal with the challenges of parking and density and traffic.
My next question, are there any recent decisions by the Borough Council that stand out to you as a point of clear disagreement or agreement? I know you already laid out that one about incentivizing affordable housing, but is there anything else that stands out to you?
We talk a lot about the station project. And I think, I think people understand this now, but for a while, it felt like there wasn't the understanding that this was quite a number of years ago that the decision about height was made. It was in twenty eighteen, I believe. And that's a few Borough Councils ago. So it's hard to put myself back in that, those seats. But seven stories, six stories with mechanicals, whatever it is, the height that they're talking about, it might be a little higher than I'd be comfortable with. I might have said, hey, how about we come a little bit lower? I don't know. Like, again, I didn't, I wasn't privy to all the documents that they read or the discussions that they had. I just saw the final meeting where the vote happened, and that's not enough of the context. But I do believe, I'm not, it doesn't keep me up at night. I don't believe it's going to ruin our town, but I might have voted for one floor lower than that.
I see.
Yeah.
Is there anything that you, that you see as a clear point of agreement with the Borough Council? Is there a decision that you really liked?
Well, I'm glad that they've undertaken this big project of rezoning. I think that that is the forward thinking and planning that we need. And there's plenty of smaller places than Gettysburg where a Borough Council is kind of overwhelmed and can't do that kind of forward thinking. So we have dedicated public servants who put the time into this. We are an important town, so we shouldn't be making decisions haphazardly. We should be very thoughtful in our planning. So I appreciate that thoughtful planning, and I want to be part of that. I want to be part of pulling people together. There are a number of large assets in our town. The Park Service, the college are certainly two of them. The Borough Government and the Community Foundation. I would love to see them all coming together at different times so that where our priorities align, we can also align our strategy and be more effective. Destination Gettysburg and Main Street Gettysburg being two other really important players, I say.
And how would you advocate for the college community and balance it with your duties in the broader community? How would you engage with the college community with your role at the college and the Borough Council?
Yeah, at the Center for Public Service, I'm certainly focused on how can college students and faculty be involved in the addressing of community challenges, helping where there's need. But we're doing that with an eye to how can that also improve student learning in the classroom, outside of the classroom? So that I always have my eye open to that, whether I'm walking at the farmer's market and just happen to talk to somebody, or when I'm at the Borough Council meeting, if I attend an event at the Arts Council, you know, I hear a conversation. I'm like, hey, students could go to that. And that will help them understand this dynamic in the sociology class that they're taking. So that is how I would see my role contributing to college goals. If that, or is that not your question?
Yeah, it was just how you would advocate for students in the Borough Council and balance that with the community.
Yeah, I would see advocating for student learning as being an important part. Yeah.
Awesome. So what is one thing that you hope to achieve during your potential term on the Gettysburg Borough Council?
I hope to be a part of that thing I was just describing, more conversations happening between the big players, bringing campus partners, community partners, and the Park Service and others together to strategize. I think there's really big things that we could be doing that would benefit everybody. And sometimes we can just get so busy and focused on our own missions that we don't realize how collaborating could improve all of our work.
And how would you balance your work at the college with your work on Borough Council, holding the two positions at the same time?
Yeah, I don't, I don't want anything to affect my effectiveness here at the college. Anytime I take on an additional board, or in this case, this role, I try to ensure that the work happens outside of my work hours. Of course, I have a flexible schedule, so if I were to have a coffee in the morning, I would just, I mean, I'm working late here a lot too. So Borough meetings tend to be Monday nights. That will affect my ability to be at the Painted Turtle Farm on Monday nights, which doesn't happen over the winter, but I won't be able to be at the farm as much, and I regret that. But we have a good team of students. But we have a good team of students and other staff who are there supporting them. And then preparation for the committee, the council meetings, I imagine happening over the weekends a lot and in the evenings. So don't want to, I don't want anyone to come to my office at the Center for Public Service and see me preparing for Borough Council meetings. That's not really the space for that. So hoping to keep them separate, although in my head, all the knowledge, again, being complimentary and reinforcing each other's missions, yeah.
Yep, absolutely. And my last question, I just wanna, I wanna give you opportunity to say anything that you want to say that perhaps you haven't said yet. Why should people vote for you?
Yeah. Well, I think, I have a very strong community focus. I'm not running for Borough Council for any personal gain. There are sometimes, there are stories that I hear of business owners running because they're mad about parking or something like that, you know? And that doesn't mean a Borough, a business person cannot be an effective Borough Council member. I'm just trying to say, that's not my motivation. I don't have an issue, a personal thing, that I'm coming here to try to change. I am coming to try to improve my community and I don't know that I have all of the knowledge or expertise to do that, but I do believe I have the skills of bringing people together in ways that do make us more effective. And that's, you can vote for me for that reason, or you can vote for the other person if you think they'd be better.
Thank you so much for joining me. This is Jeffrey Rio. The deadline to register to vote in Pennsylvania is October 20th and Election Day is November 4th. Make sure to go out and vote. Jeffrey Rio, I believe, yep, for Gettysburg Borough Council, Ward One. Thank you so much for joining me.
Thank you.
That was my interview with Jeff Rio. I hope you enjoyed. Now I'm going to talk a little bit about some, there were some op-eds in relation to some elections coming up in Gettysburg and Adams County. So I'm going to read them, all of these. I, I just wanted to get like a variety of different viewpoints on these issues, so they're not my, I don't personally agree with everything that every, everyone says in here, but I just wanted to like, they're, they're important people in the community sharing their, you know, their opinions about these issues, so I just wanna, I just wanna talk about them. So here was an op-ed in The Gettysburg Connection by Ted Streeter, former Gettysburg mayor, and he is supportive of Rita Freeling for mayor reelection. So I'm going to read that op-ed. You may recall that Rita Freeling narrowly lost the Democratic primary, but overwhelmingly won the write-in Republican vote, which qualifies her to run on the Republican ticket. She could have quit at that point, but Rita is not a person who backs down in the face of adversity or challenge. Regardless of ticket, Rita has been and will be a mayor for all of Gettysburg. She believes, as I do, that she possesses the common sense and reason that make her the better mayoral candidate. The area of police management, management provides an excellent example. I understand that Rita's opponent wants to concede management of the police from the mayor to the council and slash or the borough manager, reasoning that eight managers, i.e. the council slash manager, are better than one, i.e. the mayor. Really? I can't imagine anyone who would like eight bosses, none of whom know anything about police operations peering over one's shoulder. The Pennsylvania Municipal Code explicitly gives the mayor oversight of the police department. Rita, who possesses a law degree, understands that and will fight to keep the status quo. I have known Chad Allen Carr for some time. He has contributed significantly to the arts as well as to other aspects of the Gettysburg community. However, I do not believe he has the fortitude necessary to keep the mayor's office separate from the council slash manager. Rita, on the other hand, has demonstrated for four years her ability to maintain the office of the mayor as an entirely separate and apart, as an entity separate and apart, excuse me. The upcoming election is crucial. It will determine whether the borough continues to follow the guidelines of the Pennsylvania Municipal Code, which have worked well for so long, or whether the borough consolidates power in one body, thereby destroying the separation of powers. That, in my opinion, would be an extremely unhealthy move. Rita Freeling, an attorney, understands this and will fight for the status quo. I urge voters to endorse Rita's strong leadership and vote for her on November 4th. Ted Streeter, Gettysburg former mayor. And so that's the perspective for Rita Freeling. And I'm also gonna read another op-ed in The Gettysburg Connection supporting Chad Allen Carr. This one is by Lisa Melandra Shower from Gettysburg, support of Chad Allen Carr for Gettysburg Mayor. As a longtime resident of Gettysburg Borough, I'm convinced that supporting Chad Allen Carr to be our next mayor is the right thing to do. Gettysburg Borough residents have many concerns, issues and complaints. I would like to address the three I think stand out most. One, transparency. Too often over the years, it has been difficult to understand certain decisions or stances taken by the Borough Council. A leader that is not only a recognizable figure, but also a proven leader and/or advocates for the residents is a huge asset. Chad Allen has exhibited these abilities. Number two, accessibility. The borough website offers a lot of resources, yet sometimes it is difficult to find a direct answer to a given question. Through personal experience, I have found Chad Allen is more than happy to discuss questions slash concerns of mine. When he began his campaign for the primary election, I reached out through an email and ultimately shared a coffee at a local coffee shop with him, where he answers the initial questions I had and more. The ability to think out of the box, times are changing. One quarter into the 21st century has taught those of us who have traversed the time periods that things are simply not the same. Through technology, current events, natural disasters, as well as changing opinions on what our iconic town should not be, we need a leader who will be able to adapt to this ever-changing scenario. My full support of Chad Allen Carr is not just for now. If elected, once he takes office, he will continue to have my support. Lisa Melandra Shower from Gettysburg. So those were two perspectives for the two different mayor candidates. Next, I want to move to Ryan Kearney, who wrote an opinion piece, again, in The Gettysburg Connection about the Gettysburg Area School District School Board elections. He, of course, is a candidate in the special election for the two-year seat. And there are, of course, eight candidates for the four-year seat, for four four-year seats, and two candidates for the one, two-year special election seat. So this is Ryan Kearney on Gettysburg Area School District Elections in The Gettysburg Connection. In the coming weeks, voters in the Gettysburg Area School District will elect new school directors in a highly important general election. I humbly ask for your support for a group of community-minded leaders who possess the experience and dedication needed to navigate the challenges ahead. For the four, four-year positions, please consider Julieta Bose, Charles Weiss, Dale Brennan, Donna Harrison and Kathleen Pratt. These candidates have been actively speaking to the community and engaging in transparent campaigns to improve our schools. Over the past two months, I have gotten to know all of them and consider each to bring an exceptional qualities as school board director candidates. I am running for separate two-year seat and humbly ask for your support. This slate offers a crucial combination of decades in education, fiscal management, expertise and commitment to the best interests of our students. The Gettysburg Area School District Board recently adopted the general fund budget for the 2025-26 fiscal year. This budget with expenditures totaling $79,214,846 was adopted alongside a taxing resolution setting the real estate tax at, I believe that is 11th, 11th, okay, I'm gonna skip that, I'm not sure. While this budget maintains the policy target for the estimated ending unassigned fund balance at $4,752,890, the stability of our district finances relies heavily on local sources, which make up for over 67% of anticipated revenues. Leaders such as Mrs. Bose, who emphasized working within tight financial limits, and Dr. Weiss, who is concerned with fiscal responsibility, are essential to ensuring financial health going forward. The economic environment plagued by uncertainty at both the state and federal levels severely jeopardizes Gettysburg Area School District's ability to meet critical educational goals. The recent state budget impasse has already denied Pennsylvania public school billions in expected payments, forcing districts statewide to consider drastic measures. Furthermore, federal funding sources such as those that support special programs face significant cuts, including a proposed 15% reduction in overall federal education spending. We have already seen the vulnerability of federal aid, with funding recently halted for programs supporting some of the county's most vulnerable students nationwide. This instability directly threatens the goals of our 2025 to 2028 Gettysburg Area School District Comprehensive Plan, particularly our goal of supporting our neediest students. Our Title I elementary schools, Lincoln, James Geddes and Franklin Township, have seen declines in ELA performance among economically disadvantaged students. The district's plan specifically commits to improving ELA achievement through targeted resources and supporting our diverse student population. Moreover, a core goal is improving the continuity of special education services by increasing district-operated programs such as life skills support and autism support to reduce the number of students educated outside the district. The current federal budget proposal seeks to dismantle all federal support for students with disabilities, so our schools are going to need to prioritize how we fill this gap. Expertise from candidates like Mr. Brennan, dedicated to helping young people build their futures, and Ms. Harrison, with decades of district leadership, will be vital to protecting these vulnerable programs. We need board members ready to champion responsible spending while advocating for our students against external pressures with experience like Ms. Pratt's history of common sense taxation and my own commitment to finding educational partnerships, this slate is prepared to ensure academic excellence and fiscal stability of Gettysburg students. I apologize for messing up those numbers there, but our next, our next opinion piece is, is interesting. It is in support of the Gettysburg Police Department by Gettysburg Council Member Chris Berger. So I just want to get this perspective in, I think it's valuable. So it says, "The recent area shootings of our seven police officers, four of whom died, attest to the somber reality that our brave public servants protect us at the risk of their own lives on a daily basis. Here in our community, the Gettysburg Police Department deserves much credit for their professionalism and dedication to keeping us safe. From my standpoint as a council member, I am proud to witness firsthand the seasoned leadership of our veteran officers and the solid performance of our talented younger officers. They effectively rise to the challenge of serving and protecting not only our residents, but the approximately 1 million visitors who come to our famous small town annually. The unfair demonization and demoralization of police throughout the country in recent years has had negative effects on public safety in communities nationwide. This biased stigma is projected even at our own police department, despite the fact that they have steadily improved and have had no lawsuits during the past several years. Truly, our officers have performed competently and admirably, apologies, even with the unique challenges of tourists, special events, demonstrations and protests during this tumultuous time. Police are already in place to hold, I'm sorry, policies are already in place to hold police accountable and provide the supervision and training to further improve the department. While I respect my colleagues on council, I strongly disagree with their dubious scheme to remove oversight of the police from the mayor. This possibility has already lowered the morale of our officers and I believe will only cause harm, including a possible lawsuit. Some excellent officers may even leave or retire, as others have done in departments across the country. Unfortunately, there have been some slander and whisper campaigns directed at our current mayor Rita Freeling. She is a strong independent woman with a law degree and experience in state politics. Rita has an excellent working relationship with our department and has their respect. She agrees, as I do, that the oversight of the police should stay with the mayor as dictated by the Borough Code. It seems odd that someone would run for mayor in order to strip their authority vested in state law, only to hand it off to other entities. There are cer, there certainly are negative unintended consequences of trying to fix something that isn't broken. Our department will always have room to improve, but should be done under our current system." Chris Berger says, "I am running for council again with the priority of supporting our police department in order to ensure Gettysburg remains a safe, vibrant town, welcoming to our residents and visitors alike. Small businesses, economic development, tourism, special events and the neighborhoods where we live depend on the safety and public trust our police department provides. The next time you see a cop, wave, smile and say hello. And keep in mind that regardless of your politics or feelings towards them, they will still come to your aid or risk their lives to save yours as they have always done. Sincerely, Chris Berger, Gettysburg Council Member," and this appeared in The Gettysburg Connection on October 16th. So those were a few perspectives on the upcoming election. Another reminder, October 20th, the last time to register to vote in Pennsylvania. And the Gettysburg Borough Municipal Election is November 4th. So go out and vote whoever you support, just make sure to vote. Next up, we are going to move to the faculty meeting. This appeared in The Gettysburgen, it was written by Sophia Lang, great article. President Bob Uliano opened Thursday's faculty meeting by summarizing the Town Hall meeting, held twice a year, that occurred on Wednesday. In the fall meeting, they typically discuss the key objectives for the upcoming year. "One is executing on the existing priorities," Uliano said. "We did an awful lot last year, from the new majors to the residence halls to so much more. We want to make sure that we are doing everything we can to deliver that as dynamically as possible." Second, he emphasized the importance of the project led by Jamie Yates titled Gettysburg 2.0, which will be the future of how the college communicates with prospective students. Third, he discussed the college's continued focus on financial stability. He explained that the college will need to continue examining its organization and technology use, among other things, in a consistent manner with its mission and obligations to students. Finally, Uliano spoke about the current educational environment in a national context, including the changing relationship between higher education and the government. Quote, "I will repeat what I said to you all at our first faculty meeting, and I said again yesterday, the best solution to this problem is for us to pay attention to the basics here." Uliano said, "When people want to challenge what happens in American higher education, let's continue to educate our students in the way we educate our students every day and get them ready for a world of impact that they do." He also emphasized the importance of community as a defining characteristic of a college. Additionally, Uliano addressed concerns about the reasons for the college, college's recent update to its visual identity. The previous mark did not translate well on digital platforms because of the high volume of people who get their information online about Gettysburg. The college decided to update it. The college also chose this time for the change due to its proximity to both public phases of the campaign as well as the bicentennial. Quote, "In everything we do, we're trying to send a message up to the world that we are moving, adapting, evolving with the times. The updated mark helps to do some of that." The process required consultation and collaboration with students, faculty and staff, used funds set aside specifically for marketing. Uliano announced a $4.7 million gift from the former trustee Sharon Baky Nestler, I believe, which brought the campaign total to almost $100 million. And something that I discussed on a previous Gettysburg update, there was a proposal to change the, the suspension period from, I believe it was one year to one semester, and that was tabled, but that was the discussion that happened. But at this meeting, they finally voted on it and they voted in favor of shortening the suspension period. It was previously one year, now it is just one semester. It was tabled, now it's been voted on. So next up, the faculty council presented the concerns that the drop ad period of two weeks is too long. Quote, "This is the main concern that we're hearing and that students miss four to six week, four to six or more class sessions if they join a class at the end of week two," said chairperson of faculty council and chairperson of the German Department, Keri Wallasch. Quote, "In raising the issue today, faculty council just hoping, is just hoping to open up and initiate a robust discussion about the length of the drop ad period. Registrar Brian Reese and Dean of Academic Advising and Student Success Joseph Brandauer then gave a presentation on the history and rationale of the proposed changes. The last changes to the length of the ad drop period were made in 2010 and went The last changes to the length of the ad drop period were made in 2010 and went to effect in 2011, when the decision was made to change the length from 12 class days to 10. Currently, the Office of Registrar encourages students to make any changes to their schedules within the first week of classes, but students face challenges such as financial holds and ASE petitions that bar them from making changes to their schedules until the second week of classes. To remedy the situation, Brandauer discussed potential solutions where students must obtain instructor approval in the second week of classes to add or drop courses, or when they added drop deadlines are two different days, with the drop period being longer than the ad period. Chairperson of Theater Arts Susan Russell asked for data regarding when the majority of drop ads occur. She also commented on the challenges that smaller departments face in terms of reaching size, caps and classes, and how reducing the drop ad period would likely worsen the pressures. Several other professors from various departments expressed that they felt the drop ad period was too long due to the amount of work that students could potentially have to do to catch up, should they add the class on the second Friday. Another professor discussed the issues with seat numbers that differ for class years and how that can prevent underclassmen from getting into a class that they need to take. Additionally, another professor suggested different drop ad deadlines for first-year students. The discussion did not produce emotion at this time. Director of the Sunderman Conservatory, James Day, mentioned that many professors felt there was pressure to allow students to join a course during the second week. On that topic, Brandauer said, quote, "We had one case in the Center for Student Success where I needed to send emails to instructors and it was related to visa issues and essentially their schedules are wiped out, but we generally don't. We really try not to overstep because we're concerned about pressurizing." Moving on, I'm just going to talk about some local events in the area. Adams County Church Women United will meet Wednesday, November 5th at 11:30 a.m. at Gettysburg Church of the Brethren, 1710 Biglerville Road. Following the luncheon, we will celebrate World Communion Day. Bring a bagged lunch, dessert and beverages will be provided. Invite a friend, no reservation. The Adams County SPCA is participating in Boskov's Friends Helping Friends event for nonprofit organizations. For a $5 donation to the shelter, you'll get a $25 discount shopping pass to use October 22nd at any Boskov store or online. The donation help, the donations help care for the critters at the ACSPCA. Call the shelter at 717-334-8876 or visit their website, www.adamscountiespc.org. Adams and York County Veterans Organizations are sponsoring a free bus trip for a veteran and a guest Thursday, November 6th to the United States Naval Academy in Annapolis, Maryland. Adams County and Hanover Area Veterans will meet at the Hanover Elks 47 North Fornie Avenue, Hanover, PA at 7 a.m. Advanced registration is required. Registration forms can be attained at any Adams County or Hanover Area Veterans Club or by contacting Bob Miller, 717-676-6180, or by email at rwmillercpa@hotmail.com. The deadline for registration is October 24th. Those were some community events and thank you so much for listening to the Gettysburg Update. I've been Dan. I will see you next week. Goodbye.